While we start the meeting, I'm going to try to work on this. But I don't want to hold the meeting up, so why don't we call the meeting to order for Tuesday, October 24th, the meeting of the Planning Board? If I could have a introduction of everyone who is on attendance, so we know who is with us. You want to start introducing yourselves, members?
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Sean, you're muted.
And myself, Meredith, serving as Chair. And our staff who is with us. Josh, I hear you.
Yes, Josh Eckertley, Assistant Director.
Tim Zierwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And Julia?
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Great, thank you all.
Meredith, I had, I had, I had myself unmuted, Meredith. I am here, Sean Fahey, member.
That's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, okay, great. Great. Okay, terrific. So the, the purpose for the meeting tonight, we have a single agenda item. And it's to review and to vote on the multifamily overlay district language. We had reviewed that at the last meeting where Maggie had worked very hard on pulling together some districts, which were a fifteen unit per acre districts. And we were just going to hear an update on Maggie, on, on where you were with everything. And if you, so if you want to sort of just start this off, that would be great.
Sure. I hope everybody had a good weekend. So I wanted to thank you for giving me the chance to review my numbers. I did spend some time driving around all the neighborhoods that have been proposed. And even though I have been in all of them, I just wanted to really, you know, look at it and through the lens of increasing the housing in those areas and how it would really impact those neighborhoods. So I did spend a lot of time on Granite Ave and Two Granite and Central. And, you know, I was able to increase some of the units on all of the, on a lot of the places we've already discussed. So eighty-eight wharf, I went up. And so I increased the, the unit count at many of the places. However, I then did add two other additional unit districts to it. One was at Blue Hill Ave, the corner of Blue Hill Ave and Brush Hill and and the Parkway there, where Milton Yoga is. So there are already six units existing at that location. And I thought it would be comfortable to, to increase it till about ten. And the other location, which is a new district that hasn't been discussed. But I confirmed with Tim on Friday that it was still within the half mile. And that was at the Goddard School, which has, you know, almost an acre and a half. And that would allow for a minimum of twenty-two units in that area, but I bumped it up to thirty. So as I've said before, my leading principle has been to follow the statute. And the statute is fifteen units per acre within a half a mile of the transit in the, in, in a district of reasonable size. You know, I don't need to go into all of my reasons. I've explained it for many, many, many months. And everyone's pretty much knows where I stand. I do believe that zoning is, it should not be reactionary. Good zoning definitely should not be reactionary. It should be slow and steady. And, and I am not comfortable getting up to the thousand units that we talked about at our last meeting. With my additional changes, I was able to get up to about a, to a count of about seven hundred and nine units. And I've just struggled with overburdening and destroying the neighborhoods that I love so much. So I, I, I am struggling that I can't support something that has so many legal issues ahead of it. I do believe in being compliant with the statute. And I really think this is my best effort in complying with the statute. So that is where I stand.
Thank you so much, Maggie. I, I do appreciate your, you know, I think we've all been looking at this with, you know, looking under every rock, just, you know, literally just turning over every stone to see where we possibly could put units and districts that would be the least impactful to the, to the really, you know, trying to preserve the natural historic character of the town. And it's a challenge. It's not, it's not easy. So you have taken off, you took off Granite Avenue, did you?
So I never had Granite Ave on mine because that is outside the half mile. So to reiterate, my guiding principles were the statute, which was a half mile. That is the only really very explicit direction that we have had in the statute. We've had the half mile and the fifteen units per acre. So I stuck to the statute because if I started looking at the guidelines, the guidelines are, from what my understanding is, that guidelines are not legally enforceable. They're not regulations. They are up for the possibility of being changed as, you know, policies change and as administrations change. And I have just been really very focused on the statute. I want to comply with the statute. And that's how I arrived at my number and Granite Ave was not part of it.
Maggie, or actually this, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Sean, yes, please, other members.
Yeah. I, I understood that Granite Ave North is within a half mile. At least I'm, I'm looking on what UTIL has provided with us. Josh, can you confirm if North is inside the half mile?
Yeah, the Two Granite Ave site is within a half mile radius of the
Yeah, that's what's, okay, great. So that's referred to as North, the Two Granite Ave section. Would that, would that, would that cheat?
So I have, I do have that, I have Two Granite Ave in mind, yes.
You don't have South then, okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And at Two Granite Ave, I had it at sixty-two units last time. And I have increased it to eighty units. So again, I went by what we are comfortable with here in Milton, what we have passed through the special permit process in the past. And what I think we're all comfortable with is eighty-eight wharf. To me, eighty-eight wharf was sort of our model. And that was seventy-three units. And so I spent some time down at eighty-eight wharf, looking at the site in which it sits. And then I went over to Two Granite Ave and sat over there for a little bit of time. Drove over to Dorchester, to the Keystone Building. And I was able to increase that density to eighty units. That was part of my increase.
And your total number now is?
Seven oh nine.
All right. Maggie, I know you really struggled with this and I know it, this is, you know, pushing numbers even higher than you were originally going to go. So I, I, I'm grateful for that. I think, well, I, I'll let the other board members speak. Go ahead and speak as well. So any comments from other board members before I speak?
Well, I, you know, my opinion, and I'll be repeating what I had said last week. I, I support a ten percent zoning plan. I believe that would be consistent with an argument that's been made by a select board. I believe our select board's letter dated nine twenty-two outlines reason and logic of why we should be considered a adjacent community. And I recognize the letter that was returned to us yesterday. And I, I do recognize that even in that letter, you know, again, they're not willing to accept what the select board has outlined. However, it's my opinion that I think it's worth pursuing an adjacent community designation. And maybe that can't be achieved in the short term. The short term being this period of time between now and the twelve-four town meeting. However, it's my opinion that the select board has written in that letter from nine twenty-two, a position that they are of a very sincere and serious mindset. And for that reason, I would only support an alternative article that has ten percent zoning. So I, I'll say what I said last week. Maggie has poured her heart and soul into something that she believes in. And she has every right to do so. And I, I, I hold no judgment against anyone for their position. I certainly hold no judgment against Maggie for hers. There, there are people that believe that what Maggie, Maggie's article outlines is, is appropriate. And there were people that believe, you know, what Cheryl has stated previously is appropriate. I happen to believe that we are most appropriately a ten percent designation as an adjacent community. And I wouldn't be willing to be satisfied with the exchange of letters that have taken place to date between the E O H L C and our select board. So I, I unfortunately, Maggie, I, I can't support an article that doesn't reach ten percent.
No, and I understand that. And I know, as I've said before, you know, and as a reasonable minds can disagree. And I believe that. And I just feel like at this point in time, I can't, I can't increase it in good faith. You know, I did happen to watch the warrant committee last night. And I thought they had an interesting back and forth discussion. And I, I feel more firmly in my position that the guidelines are probably going to be challenged and probably going to be changed. And I don't want to put this town in a position where, where you are overzoning just to meet a number. I really thought my original amount was good zoning in places that we all could support and that we all want moving forward and increasing it. I feel like we're just randomly trying to pick neighborhoods just to meet a number. And I don't think that's how good zoning is. I know the, the length of time that my, that I personally have spent and my family has spent to rezone our property. And that was just for one little piece of property. And this whole process is so rushed and it's so unsettling to me that I'm not comfortable going through it and disrupting other neighborhoods. So I think my original, I still firmly believe in, and I think it's, would be good for the town, really good for the town. If, even if the guidelines were changed or repealed, I still think that, that that would give Milton an opportunity for, to create good zoning and good development. So thanks.
Thank you, thanks so much, Maggie. Jim or Cheryl?
So first of all, I applaud Maggie's work. I mean, that what you did was great, from the heart, honest and open, which I think is super important. Nice job. I can't imagine spending my weekend driving around staring at properties, analyzing, overanalyzing, and all alone with nobody to bounce it off of, just, just well done. I've always been an adjacent community guy. So I agree with Sean that, you know, if we're going to do this, it should be a ten percent. We should stick with our, what, what I feel is our proper classification, which is adjacent community. But even with that, I think that, you know, going through the exercise is great, but what we're doing right now is, is just rushing something through. And I don't know if it's to compete with a select board article or to give the, the townspeople a better option. I kind of see both of those. But I just think we need more time on this. I don't see why we can't just wait three, six months, go back to the maps and get it right. I don't think that, even if we came to ten percent tonight, I don't think it would be right. I think we need a little more time. And, and you know, if, if we do nothing and just don't present an article, it doesn't close the door on tweaking your article, Maggie, and adding to it and getting to ten percent or whatever we got to do to do something better than the select board and maybe a little bit more than what you have. So I, I'm, I'm a more time guy. I really think we need more time. So I would, I would be comfortable without an article so we can get it right in, you know, six months' time, in three months' time, whatever it takes. And I also would be comfortable pursuing whether it's legal action or showing that letter to a lawyer and saying, hey, do we have a chance? Do you think there's a good argument for fighting this in court to try and get a reclassification? The state says no, we, I say yes. I mean, who knows what would happen? I don't know what it would cost to show it to a lawyer, but it, it can't be that much to get another opinion. That's where I am.
Great, thank you, Jim. And Cheryl, any comments from, that you'd like to share? I have a sense of where. But please.
Yeah, we have had a lot of conversations about the compliant article that Tim and the select board have worked on. And I have expressed a viewpoint that I didn't see the point of submitting a non-compliant article because there's no such thing with respect to E O H L C as sort of partially compliant or on a path to compliant or sort of maybe compliant. We don't, we're not given the opportunity to pick the type of community that we are. We've been designated a rapid transit community. And so I, I feel as if we have spent a lot of time in our meetings talking about whether we're rapid transit or not, whether the trolley's really rapid or not, whether the design guidelines are legal or not. And a lot less time focused on what compliance looks like. We've spent a time of late, thankfully, on the maps and really working with our technical assistance consultants on the maps. And as you all know, I've spent time outside of our meetings looking at the language in the zoning to make it as strong as it can be because the, the state has given us a lot of flexibility in the guidelines to tailor the zoning to each community and to our community. And I think these maps and the language, we're really taking advantage of that flexibility. So I still feel as if the compliant zoning is what town needing, town meeting needs to focus on. If we were looking to zone for multifamily housing, independent of this requirement of the MBTA community's law, we should be going through a different process. And I feel as if anything that's not a compliant article is just that. So as you know, I wouldn't intend to support this non-compliant article to be submitted to the select board for inclusion on the warrants.
Thank you, Cheryl. And you know, as you know, I've, I've stated a number of times, I feel like whether it's our article or the select board's article, there's, we have made tremendous progress, but I think there still is a lot of work to be done. And, but, you know, even in the last month, we've, we've made tremendous, you know, I think progress working on zoning language, discussing that. But I, and I, I absolutely respect the select board's position in putting an article forth to town meeting. At this point, I don't feel like we have the article that I would want to submit on behalf of the planning board. I don't, I don't think we're ready, you know. We are, we are still, we don't have a build-out analysis. We don't have a fiscal analysis. There's some really important aspects to doing zoning that are still incomplete. And so, you know, I was hoping that we could come up with a number that it would be something that could be considered by town meeting that we could continue to work on. And, and whether the, whether the select board's article goes forward or not, my plan is that we, we continue to work on it. And I know we've discussed that as a board because there's always room, you know, and ways to make it better, to improve. But at this point, I don't think it makes sense to have a competing article right now with, with the select board's article. And I think, you know, unless we really had something that was really ready, that we felt prepared to, and for myself at least, to stand up and, you know, and, and speak on and defend that sort of sense of, of, you know, compromise. And, and for those, you know, maybe town meeting members who want nothing, there's people who, you know, want full compliance. I was trying to get to sort of something that was a sort of an in-between with, with what would be, and, and also, you know, in defense of our being adjacent community. So with that said, I, I just, I think it's better for us to continue to work on our article. I feel like we're at a point, whether the select board's article, you know, moves forward, that, that we can still, you know, let's see what happens at town meeting. And then we can pick up where we've left off and continue, you know, doing some really good work on this. Because this is a tremendous zoning initiative and we want to make sure we get it right. So at that point, I would not support.
Meredith, we've lost your audio.
Is everybody else still connected?
I'm here.
Okay.
We're so close.
Maggie, while we're waiting, I do thank you for your work on this as well. I too know what it's like to walk and drive around those neighborhoods and to think carefully about the character of each neighborhood and how the zoning. I, I would say that I disagree that I think it could destroy the neighborhoods because I think we've really thought very carefully and hard about these, all of the zoning parameters. But how we could fit some additional housing into the, into these neighborhoods without destroying them. So, but I, I know we have a difference of opinion there, but I did want to thank you for your efforts.
You're muted, Maggie.
Yeah. Yeah, we all work hard and we all bring different perspectives. And I think, I think we all respect each other. And to me, that's the most important thing. We don't always have to agree. But I think we all respect each other and we all come from slightly different perspectives. But we all sort of still have to remain true to who we are. And that's sort of what I did here, so.
I don't see Meredith on the screen any longer. She must be trying to dial back in.
Yeah, if I see her number again, I'll, I'll allow her to talk, but she, she hasn't rejoined as either panelist or attendee.
And, you know, I think it's great that we, we could be afforded some time to really learn what the courts have to say. You know, I'm not a lawyer, but I've been talking to many and from all different backgrounds. And and, and I think it's, it's always prudent to weigh the risks. I'm not afraid of taking risks when you own your own business. You know, every day's a risk. Getting up in the morning and, is a risk. But I think it's less risky to do, to, to take the weight and see. We're, we're here representing so many different people in so many different neighborhoods. And we haven't heard from them yet. And I think we would be putting, I think it'd be more risky moving forward at this time, so.
So while we're waiting, Tim, can you, for the folks who are watching, explain the public hearing that's scheduled for Thursday? How that is going to run and, and the subject of the, of the public hearing?
So the, the subject of the public hearing is the, the select board's article that is currently posted on the Planning Board website under Development and Zoning Proposals. That's where we, you know, we, we put zoning proposals prior to town meeting. The select board is actually going to be voting on some slight modifications to that language that was approved by them in, in late September. We've talked about this, a lot of the development standard and site plan approval kind of edits that, that Cheryl proposed. In addition to the, the addition of some floor air ratio constraints.
Tim, I'm back in, can you hear me now?
Yeah, Meredith, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry. All right, I didn't want to interrupt you, but continue, I'm back in.
Yeah, no worries. Glad to have you back. So the, the, the public hearing, you know, is, is going to work pretty, pretty basic. You know, we'll do a presentation on what is, you know, so far the final language. You know, not dissimilar from, from other presentations that we've given. I think we'll try to go a little bit more in-depth into, you know, what's actually in the language. You know, just so people have an opportunity to kind of, you know, hear that, you know, in a verbal kind of manner. And then I think, you know, it's, it's, it's the board's hearing. So if, if, if the planning board wants to continue, you know, discussing that language, they can. I'm sure there are folks that, you know, want to be heard from the public and, and that's their opportunity. So there'll be, you know, obviously a significant public comment portion of that. We will be in the blue room. So we'll have folks in the blue room. We're going to arrange for, if there's any overflow capacity needs, we'll have the meeting, you know, streaming on the TV in the kitchen conference room. And we'll try to set up a laptop down the hall in the, in the baker room so that if there's additional overflow capacity needs, we can have people that are coming to, to town hall in that room. We'll also be, it's a hybrid meeting. We'll also be on Zoom. So if people want to, you know, not have to worry about, you know, crowding into the blue room, they can obviously participate via Zoom. You know, just like all the rest of the, the planning board's normal hybrid meetings. So that's what we're expecting for Thursday.
All right, Tim. Thank you so much. So I don't know where I, where I lost you, but, but I just, you know, I was just saying that unfortunately, I'm not ready to move our article forward yet. I think we need more work still on our article. So at this, at this time, I would make, I would ask for a motion to withdraw, withdraw our article, which we have requested that the select board open the warrant this evening and have requested that they include the article. I would make a motion that we withdraw that request.
Yeah. So I make a motion to withdraw the planning board's article from the warrant request to the select board.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's do since we're all on Zoom, a rule call. Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Well, that, that concludes our.
Can I ask, can I ask one question? It might just, I may be just asking Tim to repeat something he's already said, but Tim, for this public forum on Thursday, will you be the one presenting the article in, to the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And will the select board be there or just us?
I mean, that, that's up to them. I, I, my, my presumption has been that just like every other instance, I'll be presenting the content of the article, but I, I don't know whether or not they plan on attending. They, that may be something they discuss tonight.
So is that normal? Is that the normal procedure? Usually it's the applicant presents. Is that normal that you're presenting on behalf of the select board?
Well, I mean, in terms of zoning, like I've said it before, we're, we're, we're outside of normal right now. You know, typically these are planning board articles, you know, that, that may have a sort of a proponent, in which case, you know, this is the first time in a long time that we've done kind of, you know, townwide zoning on behalf of the town itself and not an individual property owner. So I think, you know, that, that may be something the select board discusses tonight. You know, one of the members may, I, I don't want to speculate, but you know, irrespective of anything else, you know, as, you know, an employee of the town, working for the town administrator, it would, you know, the, the actual sort of content of this thing would, 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 would fall on me, you know, irrespective of, of whether, you know, it was the select board or someone else.
So would we as a planning board request that the select board presents it to, to us? Or a member of the select board presents it?
I mean, I guess, what are, what are you asking? You're asking the chair of the select board to go through the slideshow that I've given 50 times?
Right. So this, so again, I don't know, since you just said this is uncharted territory. And that's what I am asking. Would we as a planning board want to request a member of the select board to present it because this is their article?
I don't think that's in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. I think it continues to perpetuate a select board versus planning board sort of approach. I think if this were a planning board article, we would likely have Tim be presenting it. The, he's been the lead on all of the presentations of compliance with the MBTA communities. I, I don't understand why he wouldn't take the lead. If you wanted to have a member of the select board give an introduction, I think they would be planning to do that at town meeting. The public hearing is to present the, the language of the article. So people understand what will be voted at town meeting. And I, and to take feedback. And so in prior public hearings on zoning, the planning board has weighed the comments and feedback from the public and decided whether it was able to make any revisions or if it chose to make any revisions to the zoning before it was voted at town meeting. And sometimes it has, and sometimes it's, it hasn't because it might be ruled out of scope. But it, the intent really is to get the public feedback. That's the intent, my understanding of the public hearing, to put it out for everyone to understand. And then to solicit as much feedback as possible. So I don't recommend.
You know, this is, sorry, no, keep going, Cheryl. Keep going, finish.
So I recommend that Tim do the presentation as he was planning to do, that we actually seek as much public comment as possible. And then if there's time that we deliberate about the recommendation that we'll need to make, but I think we also have time in a future meeting to do that deliberation. So my recommendation to try and set aside as much time as possible for feedback and questions from the public.
Yeah. If, if, okay, terrific.
Go ahead, John. Yes, you were gonna go.
I have my hand raised. I really didn't. I know, I'm only teasing. I actually didn't. But, uh, you know, my own opinion and, and, I mean, I'm not sure how it's handled in the past, but I would prefer no matter whose article it is, planning board or select board. You know, Tim, Tim's, this is where Tim is great at presenting. And, and, you know, my own opinion is he'd do it better than any of us and do it better than any of the select board. So I, I think, I think town will be better served if he presents it. But you know, the, the, the one question I have is, this isn't our article. If questions are asked, I actually think a representative of the select board should be present, you know, to answer questions from the community, from the residents. That, that's where I think a, a member of the select board would be very valuable for this public hearing because it's, I don't think it's responsible of us to be answering questions, you know, to an article that we didn't, you know, that, that isn't ours.
Wouldn't Tim be answering Sean for the sort of technical aspects of it, I think?
I'm sure, I'm sure he could, but you know, this isn't Tim's article. This is the select board's article.
Well, that, that's up to the, I, I think the select board can decide, you know, what they choose to do. And I'm sure Tim will pass on, you know, and discuss that with them. Um, Tim, just for regards in being sensitive to the, to the time, we just want to be able to let the select board know that we have withdrawn our article for consideration. Will you be able to do that? Or should I send an email? I just want to make sure that that the information is given on a timely map.
Meredith, I think an email from you would be appropriate, but I'll also get the town administrator just to let him know. And I'll be at the meeting anyway, you know, to, to talk about that.
And so I just have a comment. I want to follow up on Sean's comment. I don't want to lose that. So I do, so I agree with Sean that I, I don't want to be the face of this article. I have said all along, I do not want my fingerprints or the planning board's fingerprints on this article. This is a truly a select boards article. And so I'm wondering if we should make a motion for a select board representative to be at the public hearings to answer the questions.
So can I just make a comment here? We hold a public hearing because it's required by law to hold a public hearing on any zoning article that's submitted through the legal process, which could be by the select board, could be by citizens petition. It could be by an individual landowner and it could be by the planning board. Not in my time on this board, which I'm in my ninth year, have we ever made a distinction between any of these? If there was a question, I think if there's as much interest as going to be in this article and in this compliance and enough comments that if it's technical in nature and Tim can answer, I think Tim should answer. If it has to do with legal in nature, I think that should be noted and asked to be followed up by the select board at a later time because we won't have legal counsel at the hearing. So, you know, I, I think we have to be careful. We have hats. We were elected to this position. And part of the, of what's required is, is for us to hold these public hearings, to take the public comment and to, and to make suggestions about what we're being asked to do in terms of a zoning change in the town of Milton. So it, it's not up to us to say we like it or don't. It's, it's for us to listen to the public and have that zoning be presented. And so, you know, are we going to say every time that there's a new zoning article that's not planning board initiated, that we don't want our hands on it or not? I mean, that, that's just not doing our job then.
I don't agree with that.
You know, my only opinion on public meetings is that there should be an opportunity for discourse. And, you know, if, if, if what was, if what we're saying is that if a question is asked that a select board representative won't be present to answer it, I don't know that we're serving the residents as well as we should. I mean, I, I would think that any public hearing, no matter what the topic is, that a resident could ask a question and be afforded a chance to, to respond to it. Tim, Tim may have been part of creating the article, but it's still not Tim Chowinski's article. So that's my opinion. I mean, we, we don't have to talk about this all night, but I'm not sure that we're serving the residents that well by not having a, a member of the select board present to be able to, you know, respond to questions.
Cheryl, has there ever been an article presented and then the sponsor of the article not shown up at the public meeting? In your, in your nine years, I mean, I, I don't know. This is my first with this.
I don't think so, Jim, but it's up to them, you know, you know, I don't know that there's been a specific demand made that they should, that they do attend. Because the language is to stand on its own, you know, and be reviewed, explained, and a recommendation made upon it.
I mean, if somebody asks me a question, I'm just gonna, you know, somebody asking why there are 700 units on Granite Street, I'm gonna say, look, you gotta go talk to the select board. This is not me. I don't agree with this. So I mean, I, I think it would be a great idea to have the select board or someone there that sponsored the article, at least backing it up or saying, I'll get back to you on that question or representing their thoughts. It's their article. I don't see why they wouldn't be there. They wouldn't want to be there promoting it. It's a big deal.
Yeah. So to Jim's point, I mean, I haven't been at every single hearing, but I've paid attention to quite a few of them. And if, if the actual applicant, so for me, I had, I made a zoning change. If I personally could not have been there, either my brother would have been there or our attorney would have been there. So I would think that a member of the select board would be there or their attorney would be there to answer questions. So I would like to make a motion to have a select board representative or town council be at the public hearing to answer questions from the residents.
Yeah, I don't.
I, I just would like to frame that as a, as a request to have them come. I, I don't, we cannot.
Why can't it be a motion? Why can't it be a vote?
Oh, it can be a vote, but.
Maggie's motion and then we can discuss. Second.
Can you repeat the motion?
Yeah, could you repeat?
My motion is to have a representative of the select board or their legal counsel at the public hearing to answer questions from the residents.
So my, my comment is, I don't think we're special to, to request. I, I don't think we can demand anything of any other board.
Okay. So moving forward then, so moving forward, if we have an applicant who wants to put forward a zoning change, you're saying that they do not have to have a representative at, present at the public hearing?
Well, I think Tim, the representative that's been designated by the select board to represent them to make this presentation.
I missed that you guys.
I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I, I think one thing we should, we shouldn't presume, we shouldn't presume that they won't, that they don't want to attend. Unless, unless somebody knows that they already have said they don't want to attend. I mean, this, this discussion is, is really centered on an assumption that they wouldn't be present.
They're not posted for Thursday, Sean, so they're not, they can't have a quorum at the hearing.
I'm sorry.
They are not posted for a meeting on Thursday, so they cannot have a quorum at, at the hearing because they, today is Tuesday, they don't have time to post it before the meeting. So.
A select board meeting, it would just be by. Are they, are they discussing select board stuff or, or their article?
Maggie, would you accept a friendly amendment, a friendly to request a representative attend? Member of the select board attend?
Yeah, but to go back to why I think they need to be there is because I don't know, we need a representative to answer the questions. And to Jim's point, would Tim be able to answer why 700 units on Granite have? Would Tim have that? Is the select board granting Tim the authority to speak on their behalf?
I don't think it should be town council. I mean, I don't know if we pay that guy, but I don't know why we would have him show, unless he's free.
They, they work on, they work on it. It's not about dollars, I think, Jim. They, they work on a fixed value. So from what I understand, no matter what we need, they provide service for it. That's up, that's my understanding. So.
For the years, okay. Well, all right. Good job.
I think.
So if. So if Tim has the authority, if Tim has been granted the authority to speak on behalf of the select board, then are we okay with Tim being that representative?
Can I make a suggestion to the, to the board, to our board? I, I think we should handle this in a, in a, I guess, a, a more positive and and less aggressive manner. I think we should simply ask Meredith to contact the chair of the select board and, and simply let the chair know that we would like to have somebody present from the select board, you know, to address questions. And I, you know, there's a, there's a level of decorum and professionalism I think we want to have within the town and between the boards and, and just leave it at that. And at that point, they've been asked and, and if they're willing to attend, terrific, we'll, we'll be, we'll be better off for their presence. And if they decide that they, they don't attend, then so be it. But I, I don't feel comfortable being so assertive with other boards in the town.
I, I mean, I do understand that sense, but I do think we, we are in a, in a different situation than normal. I do feel like Tim isn't elected. I feel like the electeds need to. the electeds need to answer to the residents of the town. Tim has said on multiple occasions, it's not his article. And I, I, I don't want to be in a position where the residents are out there in the room at, looking for answers and a Milton resident, an elected Milton resident, isn't there to answer the question?
Maggie, the presence or the lack of presence of a member of the Select Board will convey how strongly they really support the article. They want this article to pass. I'm sure they do. They have an opportunity to have it presented via the Planning Board in a public forum. I'm confident that they believe so strongly in it that a member of the Select Board will show up. And as I said previously, I don't feel an arm twisting is, is how I would want our board to handle this. But I'm only one member of the board, so it's up to everybody else.
Well. All right. Can you all hear me?
Yes, Meredith.
Oh, sorry. I keep getting these signals that my, the meeting has been disconnected, so I just wanted to double check. I apologize. Go ahead, Cheryl.
No, no, I just said, I agree with Sean and I said, yes, I could hear you, Meredith.
Okay. Okay. Great. So we have a motion. So Maggie, would you be okay with my requesting, you know, that somebody does attend and?
So.
Did that.
So Meredith, you're our Chair and if you are asking me to withdraw the motion, I will. And to Sean's point, I, I do hope that the Select Board, you know, takes your advice. And I do hope a representative of the board shows up for each of the public hearings. So I'll withdraw it, Meredith, because you're asking.
Thank you, Maggie. I appreciate that. I think we can, we can handle communication on that, so. Okay, is there anything else on the, this particular agenda item? If not, it is 601 and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, yes. You all for your time this evening. I appreciate it and those who are in attendance who joined us this evening.
Good night, everyone.